Good evening. I call the meeting to this, the meeting of the Hampton and Borough Selectment and Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium, July 1st, 2024, at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using videoconversing technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Anybody on there?
No, the Times won't have anybody available.
Well, then I have, they're on vacation. Everyone's on vacation. Minutes. We have June 17th, 2024, regular meeting. Okay, we did the EV, talked about the EV charging station, the firefighter cadet program, the cell tower lease. Some of these things never go away. Highway paving contract, the Laughing Brook Bridge MVP, the health, shared health IMA.
Okay, and the MVP, assuming that's COVID, not COVID.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't mean that's secret money, do you?
This is secret, this is the secret MVP. That's COVID.
Yep.
All right, let's see. Yes, we got here. Cable TV agreement, one-day liquor license at the senior center. And selectmen and town administration reports.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The June 24th. That's just executive session?
Yep.
Executive session minutes. This is regarding. Okay, litigation.
Motion to approve without release.
Second.
Is it a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, next item we have on the agenda is a meeting with the senior center building committee. Do you have a representative?
Yes. I'm John Matthews. We've had some reorganization for the senior center building committee. We lost a couple of people. And we've made some changes. So Gary is going to be the president or chairman. I'm sorry. The president. I'm stuck on Thursday night. So he asked if I would fill in for him. So what we're here for is basically, the committee is enthusiastic to start work again. What we've done is we're looking forward to trying to incorporate what was stated at the town meeting. Some of those changes that were noted at the town meeting. We still may need one more member. There is a vacancy possibly. And what we may do is reach out and ask that.
It's been posted online.
It has.
Yes.
Okay, beat me to the punch. Thank you. So one of our objectives at this go-around is to reduce the cost of the project, both in soft costs and in construction costs. So how we do that, we're not 100% sure. Again, the committee is looking to possibilities of revamping the floor plan, an alternative floor plan, plan, excuse me, removing some or all of the soft costs. But we will get together and we'll make those decisions if we can. So I got a couple of tough questions, and these have to do with Don and Craig. What was the reason for your no vote? And what do you feel is a dollar amount that you could support? I don't care who answers, but I know that's a tough question.
Personally, for me, I mean, it wasn't my vote. It was people I had spoken to throughout the community who were concerned about the costs.
Okay.
Some people weren't available to attend the meetings that you had had, but they couldn't find any information of where the dollars were going.
Okay.
So there was some concerns to them. And then a lot of people felt that the project could have taken on a different light. I know there were some talks about, people thought, why wasn't a community center looked at as a greater need? You know, they felt that they were being excluded. And I know, I've heard that, you know, it's open to everybody. But, you know, when it's still being labeled as a senior center, there's a certain demographic that feels that they're being excluded from that project. So they felt kind of like, why, why not me? So that was a lot of the voices I heard from parents, you know, people that I associate with. So my vote was their vote, is how it came down.
And do you have a dollar figure that you would be comfortable with?
Any dollar figure is scary, because we know we have a lot of projects in town that need a lot of looking into. I won't put a dollar amount on what I think it should be. I do think it was a little pricey based on what was available, but that's not saying that that dollar amount doesn't fit. You know, you've talked about eliminating some of the soft costs. Maybe that helps. Maybe there's different footage, square footage ideas that can help reduce costs. Maybe there's some negotiation with the contractors to help them eliminate some of their overhead. To put a hard number on it, that's not my expertise.
I voted no, because I felt that the ask did not meet the price, which was really talked about in terms of some additional storage space, some additional rooms, that type of thing. And it really got, my belief that there was, I call it scope creep, that it really got much more expensive than it should be and bigger. I also heard from people who went to the forums, and they weren't convinced. They said, I don't understand why they're doing all these things. I, for one, would have liked to see, and I would like to still see, is a, what needs to be done to fix it? Okay, it's a 25-year roof. Maybe we need a new roof. It's maybe some of the bathroom fixtures need to be repaired, maybe the air conditioning. So I'd like to see a fixed thing, and then say the next thing is, okay, we need more storage. How's that? And we need maybe some additional space for program. But I thought, I thought it went way beyond the scope of what I, what I thought it should be. And I continually heard back from people, they just thought it was too much. And one of the things that I heard is they couldn't understand all the movement inside the building. We were moving the library and, you know, moving things around like that. They couldn't understand why that made sense. And so to me, and I would give the same advice to the fire department committee.
I agree.
You know, you know, look, look at what needs to be done to fix it, and then maybe what needs to be done to make it better. But, you know, be very conscious of the costs of all these things. So, and I went back and forth quite a bit whether I vote for it or not, but I finally decided no, it was too much. Apparently, a lot of people, a lot of people did too, you know.
I appreciate your candor, both of you. Thank you.
I do have a question for the committee, and it doesn't need to be answered now. But, you know, in this situation, we are with TWB. We are maybe looking to take that back as a town and utilize it for town needs. Does that change the scope it offer your committee? And would that change the outcome, in your opinions?
I'm going to give you my own opinion, okay? And truly, this is my own opinion. I expressed it at a meeting. But my feeling is, is that it could change the scope. And in my own weird sort of way, in my head, okay, I can envision like going over, there's a bridge there that goes from senior center to Thornton Burgess, and utilizing, you know, the possibility of Thornton Burgess's libraries, and having that be a meeting area for like the, and I'm sure some of the seniors are going to be stabbing me, killing me. But, you know, possibly to be able to show the movies there, to use that as a library. You know, I look, and I know I'm on recording, but I look at Thornton Burgess as a big asset for the community. And we know, we know, we know we need more affordable or senior housing. And I'm even thinking that you could probably maybe put some senior housing in there, tying everything together. I know, I'm sorry, Becky, but that's my own personal weird way of how it could dovetail in.
Can I add something else to about, and this comes from five years of teaching public relations and communications at Emerson College. The presentation was not good at town meeting.
Yes.
The us against them theme was not what people wanted to hear, because we all pay the bills to live in town. What they wanted to hear is, how much does it cost for this? How many people use it? The roof is $150,000? Okay, the air conditioning is $100,000. We all understand if you go larger size, you got to put sprinkler system in. They were looking for dollar figures and tax figures. They didn't want to hear that the seniors deserve it because they paid $14 million in taxes, because we all paid those taxes. I paid those taxes for 54 years in this town, so it's not a selling point. You know, and I think it needs to be, this is the dollar figure, this is why we need it, and this is how much it costs to get it.
Yeah, no argument. So.
So you want 9,800 bucks?
So here's, yes, we'd like to get 9,800. And I just wanted to address your concern, you know, asking the friends to, last week in your meeting, in the selectmen's meeting a week ago, you had mentioned something about the friends. Well, the friends, their, if you will, their bylaws basically say, purpose or purposes for the corporation is formed are as follows. And it's to raise funds for the purpose of purchasing and donating to set senior citizens any and all items of equipment, furniture, and other tangible property. So, and it goes on, but basically, that's the reason why the friends really can't foot the bill for the 9,800 dollars. Being that it's a town-owned building, that's why we're here now to ask for the 9,800 dollars.
I'll just throw another topic out there, and it's maybe an unpopular opinion, and I just, it needs to be asked. What about, Claudia may have some answers on this, is what about the Hartsprings funds? I know that was going to be used for going towards the building itself. Could this be a dovetail into helping fund that process as well?
That I don't know. I can't speak to that. Okay?
I don't think so, because it all goes into the same fund that he just talked about.
Okay, so.
Directly to.
It's right, so can that fund then be used for the new building? Or would that, would that be going towards soft costs?
So if it's tangible, okay, then it could be used for that.
Okay, so that, that account can't be used to offset the cost of the building, the cost of the renovation?
Unless, and for my understanding, unless that donation was specifically made with the intent of saying that this is, this money is to be used for building or renovating the senior center. Am I correctly saying that? You know, I know I'm looking on the spot.
I know, it sounds exactly the way I would interpret it, but.
So if somebody made a donation, and it was specific about that.
Okay, because I just, I thought the whole, the purpose of the, those donations were to go towards the overhead of the all, the overall cost of the renovation. So it doesn't sound like it's, can be used unless it's specifically donated to a certain way.
Correct. So they could, they could, in other words, if they, I'm going to say, a soft cost would be a piece of furniture, table, chair, something to that.
Right.
That way.
So if, when you go back with the architect and you pull out all the soft costs, now this fund can be used for that purpose?
That's, some of them.
So that could help offset and lower that final dollar amount?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Right now? Probably not, but do you want me to tell them, Bobby?
Yeah.
Sure.
They should know what we're working on.
So the soft cost at the present plan was 1.5.
Right.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is decrease that, how much, we don't know. Or get rid of it, and Bobby would like to do is get rid of it.
Right, but then, like you were just saying, we could use that fund to help offset some of that? Or pick and choose what needed to be paid for, for soft, for furniture supplies?
Yes, people could then donate money. It's 501(c)(corporation). So.
Can I, I want to ask this question. Under the scope of services for this proposal, right? It says, we plan to meet with the building committee to discuss the next steps and lay out goals for redesign effort. The goal of the meeting will be determine a target project cost and discuss potential programmatic reductions. What programs are they considering reducing?
Number one, right?
Yeah, number one, yeah.
So the programmatic, I'm going to, I'm going to guess, because I'm not exactly sure what they're talking about there. But I think there might have been some programs that maybe have to be moved, changed, deleted, whatever. Okay, so I'm not 100% sure what they're talking about.
What kind of programs?
So that would be in the realm of if we, if we said we're going to eliminate the nurses' office. So then we would say, are we reducing the nursing program? We had hoped that a veterans officer might be able to have an office at the senior center for handicapped accessibility and all of that. So if we don't have that space, that would fall into a kind of a programmatic reduction, that we wouldn't be able to provide that service. Because we talked about increasing programs like nursing and veteran services and personal care services and things like that. So if we don't have the space to do it, that would fall under a programmatic reduction.
And what do you, when you have a flu shot clinic, what do you do?
We cancel all the programs in the great room, and we bring in nurses from the local pharmacy, or the pharmacies.
I asked that because I've given out thousands of shots in the middle of Big Y.
Yes. But I mean, now they've got, you know, since the COVID, they have a little area now, and there's, in every pharmacy now. I can say alcoholers, yeah. And some of that is because of HIPAA.
Yeah.
HIPAA?
HIPAA.
Do you think for this proposal, that you'd be able to work with the architect to come up with maybe two scenarios?
There is a possibility.
You know, scenario A, TWB in the account, scenario B, no TWB. Because we're still, like I said, in that early stage, so it's, it could become quite an option.
It, yes, I'm not, I hope it becomes an option, to be honest with you. Yeah, to have it laid dormant, there is a definite need.
Brian, where are we going to get to 9,800?
We can target it from selectman expense. We can target, I mean, this is a refunded, obviously, budget at this point. We can ask for a transfer from, I did talk to Doug about this. It would be minimal to a request for a transfer from the new reserve account if needed, as an unexpected expense, and then refresh reserve in the fall. Variety of funding sources.
Yep.
I think it goes along with what the board mandated, basically. We said we weren't comfortable with, the plan is presented, go back, come up with a new plan. For a minimum amount of money.
We just, the town said that.
I understand that, but as, as the people that present the town's opinion, for a minimum amount of money, we're having that opportunity to come back.
I just wondered where we would get it, that's all.
How soon do you think this proposal would be ready to be presented?
We're looking for the fall town meeting.
Bring it back in fall town meeting?
We linked it. The reason, some, go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. I was just thinking, you know, I've presented stuff at fall town meeting, and I've got a lot of pushback about, is fall town meeting the right time?
And, yes.
And I agree, we need two town meetings to facilitate business work. But there is a lot of people that have spoken up at town meeting that thinks the fall town meeting is inappropriate for certain expenses.
I mean, and of course, then we have the election question that Don has researched.
We have a special election, right?
Reasonable versus 45-day thing, right? But I would make a motion to, I guess, transfer. I mean, we need to pay this out of some account, or authorize the submission of this bill to be paid out of selectman expenses. I think it'd be appropriate.
In current fiscal year?
It's now 2025, yeah.
I mean, do we have money in?
I think we put in 20,000, right?
Yeah.
So we're talking about as of July 1st, not, not backdating it to this, this time?
We need everything left over in the last year.
Right.
Take care of what we had, you know. So right now, this is a FY 2025 bill, and pretty much all the accounts are refreshed.
We, I'm assuming we're going to have to go for a proposition, two and a half exclusion again.
Right.
So we need to, we would need to have a special election, right? And we need to, we need to give the town clerk 35-day notice, I believe it is.
I believe the town clerk also said that if we were doing this, he preferred not to do it at the same time as the presidential election.
Right, so now you got.
Maybe late November or early December, I think, depending upon the town meeting is. Which I think we should be setting the date for now.
Keep in mind, we also talked about Saturday, too.
Is there a second to John's motion?
I will second John's motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Just for clarification, selectman's expenses for fiscal year 25.
Correct.
Use the, use the police station for some meetings, right?
We have, and that was because of tax. They were having taxes paid, taxes.
Tax season.
Thank you. Tax season was at that time, so they used that room to prepare taxes for the elderly, whoever they were.
I laugh, because I always use the term elderly, like, I'm not.
All those people?
All those people, right?
One of them, I was there.
Claudio?
Can I make a comment?
I'm sure you will.
Hi, thank you. I just want to thank you for listening to us. I would love to see you engage more with us at the senior center. I did not see either Craig or Don at any of our forums. It would be nice to see you there, and just so you could see what we do. There's an awful lot going on there, and a lot of hard workers, so it'd be great to have you come.
I appreciate that.
If you're not one of us older people, but stop by.
I have plenty of times, you know, the artisans' meetings, you know. You know, I did judging for the artisans last year. I was there. I've had artwork in the artisans in the past.
Okay.
If you're talking more about what we do at the senior center as far as our programs and stuff.
If you need foot care, is what she's saying, come on over.
I don't know if you qualify for that, but stop by, maybe.
In response to that, I would just like to say that the issue never was that we didn't understand what great work they do over there, we didn't understand how important it was to the community, we didn't understand all the things that go on. It just was too much money at the wrong time.
We're just getting a lot of comments from people, negative comments, from people who never set foot in the senior center. And that's just discouraging to us. There's such a wonderful amount of things going on.
I think one last comment would be, and this goes back to, I think Craig's saying, or Don mentioned before, that we had a number that we were told, at the beginning, and then the number went up. But in other projects, we've seen that as well. We saw that with the highway building, we saw that with the water district, that we thought it was going to be in the 2 million range. By the time we're all said and done, we're at three. Just because, I don't know if it's project creep or scope creep, or the reality that maybe we have rose-colored glasses, and we don't understand that engineering and contingency, all that stuff adds in, so.
If I may, and a lot of it, why we're trying to be so aggressive, Craig, is that the cost of construction is going up 7%, 8% every year. It's substantial. You know, I talked to somebody, and I'm going to give you my little story. I talked to somebody and I was about some concrete work, and I said, so what's concrete, you know, 100, 120 an hour? And he goes, what planet are you living on? And he said, it's closer to, when that's all said and done, $200 per yard. Which, you know, I mean, that's $80 more than I expected.
I completely get that. I mean, the same thing was said when we went for the fiber optic initiative. You know, and then, you know, that whole project failed for similar reasons, you know. A lot of the same people voted similar ways, you know, or opposite ways, I should say. But, you know, same concept. I understand the costs are going up.
Yes, substantial, so.
Any further discussion? Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate you.
You want the check? Do you want the check now, or?
No, I'm great. Yeah, that's fine.
No, no, I don't have the lunch. Thank you again. Thank you for.
Thank you, John. Thanks for waiting. Thank you all.
Hampton Regional, next item I put on, the Hampton, Wilbourn Regional School District Maintenance Costs Reconsideration. Last week, we decided to forego the $9,900, but then we got another bill for $4,900. Yes, we did. We got a, June 18th, we got another bill for $4,900.
Under fiscal year 24?
I forgot where the bank manager was here.
Yeah.
They're probably going to give money. Do I also think?
Is that it? The COVID, pink slips.
Anyhow.
So either way, I think, and I saw the thing, Don, I think your letter to them said, look, you know, for whatever reason, the door's closed. And we need to adhere to the contract as written and endorsed.
Right, and I just, I just want to, just want to remind everybody that it's not our money. It's the taxpayers' money, so.
Right, so we're not paying the current, the new bill, right? Is that what we're saying?
Oh, it's last year's date, right? Wasn't it 2020?
June 18th.
Yeah, so.
That's another $100 of dollars.
And there's money in the account.
I don't think we should pay it.
So the bill came after, we've had, after our meeting with?
It came.
Yeah, but it was probably work that was contracted before we did that. And they went out with the understanding that the town was going to cover it, cover their half of it. So my point is, you know, yeah, the bill's there, but you may recall the guy in April saying, look, when school's out, they need to do this work here.
We didn't authorize any of that work, though, did we?
How do you mean we didn't authorize it?
What?
How do you mean we didn't authorize it? We funded account.
Right, but what he says, they didn't come to us and say, look, I need, I need to reply, we need to refix three windows. It's going to cost 5,000 bucks.
Right, we just gave them, you know, a debit card and say, go to town.
Yeah, exactly. Now, we're going to put this money in there, we're going to split it with you.
I don't ever feel that that account was meant to be used as a debit account. It meant to be, like, the way I was seeing it was funding, okay, we have it there if we needed to fund something. But shouldn't we have been presented with a bill before we said, okay, we'll fund that or not?
School, building repair.
But we, we sign off on bills every week, my point, we would have, how come nothing was presented to us, though?
I imagine, because they were waiting for school to close to do the work. It may have been led time several years back, and Don may recall, they had worked in the drain, and they couldn't do it until it scooped out.
Yeah, right, but all that passed, it's fine, except the issue was, we shouldn't have been paying for any of that to begin with, and now here we are, and we already said, okay, well, we'll let you go with the $9,900, I guess. And now we get another bill for $4,900.
I'm not in favor of retro, asking for retro payment back of money that's already been expended. But I don't really see an interest in paying a new bill.
I don't see the new bill. I don't see it as a new bill. I see it as work they planned to do, take care of our building, and they probably scheduled it. And yes, it seemed to be concurrent with the time we said, we're not going to cover anything going forward.
Yeah, but don't you think, don't you think it's incumbent upon them to say, look, this is your landlord. I'm going to fix the door of your building. Is that okay with you? Okay, fine.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, I mean, I have, I have rental property, and oftentimes, a tenant will come to me and say, I got a few things I need to get fixed. Is it okay? I'm going to put a new, you know, a new sink fixture in. Okay, fine, you know? So at least get the okay prior to it, at least. So, at least get the okay prior to it, at least let us know it's happening. You know, then we just get a, you know, five thousand dollar bill in the mail. I don't wanna pay the forty-nine hundred.
To your opinion, I see it as a proper bill, if you're saying, we're not gonna get two signatures to endorse that bill, then it won't be submitted for payment. Is it in our bill folder?
No, I think Jane is holding it, right?
Yeah, pending the discussion.
All right, I'll say, if it was presented to me, I would sign it. You two are saying, presented to you, you would not sign it.
Based on our discussion last week, correct?
I disagree totally with that, that was not our discussion last week. Our discussion last week was, we will not fund any repairs in twenty twenty-five. Just because, and Don's point is like, we weren't kept in the loop on what you wanted to repair in the year. If you had told us this, we were, knew everything that was happening, we could have made a more informed discussion, and you're right about that. But it doesn't change the fact that this was probably something scheduled. I needed work done on my roof at the office. And I planned it in January, and the guy says, I'm coming in May, and he came in May and got it done. But I knew the work was gonna be done in four months, because that was the time they had available. Maybe we could have get, you're right about that, we could have been kept in the loop, maybe they should have been informing. Probably, no, there was an email to Bob back in September telling, these are the two or three things we were going to get done, and Bob knew about it.
I don't think that's the case.
You don't know that. There are a lot of things, there are a lot of things, there were still a lot of things that we don't know about. So anyhow, I think if that's a bad precedent, but if it's not in front of us to sign, we don't sign it, I think we are, we made a promise to them, and we're reneging on that promise. That we would honor repair bills, agree medals.
I don't think we made a promise to them, I think.
We funded the account.
Yeah, I mean, and no one seems.
Done it every year.
And no one seems to know why.
Well, and you signed off on it every year.
Yeah, I did.
I think you made a good point.
I did.
Going forward, this is the regional.
But I never looked at the lease.
Even done an error, can't live that way anymore.
All right, so we have this letter that says we can't live that way anymore.
And we all endorsed it, I thought, that was a good letter.
So we can sign this one, but I'm not gonna sign the other thing, if it comes to us. You're next. All right, well, they're signing, we have just vacancies, these are highway cemetery commission clerk, utility clerk, facilities manager.
Yep, so highway's not filled.
And I do want to say that we have nice retirement on Friday, thank you, Craig, for being there, Lauren Comstock, long-term employee. Many people will know him from his smiling face on the roadside at all times. Hopefully got somebody to replace him that presents the same way.
He's still on this week, and then he's gonna enjoy some much-needed time off.
He'll probably be the guy taking down the flags after the fourth.
I think he's gonna be in retreat after the fourth.
Yeah, really, I didn't. So what is happening with cemetery, though? I mean, that's, I mean, they haven't got an admin assistant. Are they meeting? They're not, they haven't posted a meeting since the election.
They posted one today, I think. I think they might have posted one today.
Saw Dwayne down there last week, on Thursday, in the eye of the office.
Yeah, Dwayne.
I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Dwayne and I, we have been there off and on, probably nearly every day, or pretty close to every day. Since, since the election, while Dwayne was away on vacation, but.
Yeah, but did they ever have an organization meeting, like post the meeting elector chair?
Good question.
Last posting they got is March twenty-ninth.
Right. What?
They didn't post it.
I thought I heard them talking.
All right, can you check on that?
Yep.
Are we looking for utility clerk, or we just, what are we doing?
I thought we left that in your court, right?
Yeah, so when I had a conversation with, with Joanne, it was sort of pessimistic that it would work out. So I haven't really pushed it that, that much. So I can follow back up with her, but hasn't been a lot of movement on that.
And facilities manager, are we still interested in that?
I think we're still interested in that.
Yeah.
I'd like to see where we go in the future with.
I would say after the retirement, we might have somebody perfect for the job.
You think so?
You think she'd jump at it?
Who are you talking about?
Jane.
Oh, 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 I'm thinking, yes, Friday's retirement.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Well, it also comes with the question, you know, if we take over TWB, you know, is.
That's, no, that's a bigger thing there, but I know that we have, we talked to that guy, you know, we know somebody who's interested in the job, who has intimate knowledge of the facility.
Oh, right, right, I was saying, you know.
So I think we have options.
Right.
But I don't think, just like you said, we don't know the scope of it yet, because we don't know.
We need to know the size of the, the property value that we're talking about.
We have under town guardianship, if you will.
That's.
Forty thousand square feet, and all of a sudden, we could have a hundred and twenty thousand square feet in a heartbeat.
Right.
Right, so.
I think, yeah, I think that can be contingent on where we go in the next few months.
Yeah, kind of the scope of the job.
Board vacancies, we got a vacancy on the planning board. And you got serious vacancies in the conservation commission.
So Ted is stepping down immediately, but Judy will stay to finish the project.
But that means only three are gonna vote.
Yeah, do they need another person in that timeframe? For anything new coming in?
For anything new, I mean, they couldn't bring anybody on anyhow, you know?
Not for that.
Because, I mean, Mullins wouldn't apply as long as it's been going on, so.
Yeah, we have Linda Luff is on, but she's not participating in the solar thing because she missed some of the meetings, she couldn't.
Right, no Mullins for that, yeah. But going forward, that gives them four, right?
Right.
Okay.
And the ambulance oversight committee has two openings. Jim Smith and Larry Beth are not gonna continue.
Have they officially resigned?
Didn't resign or just didn't get reappointed, was that it?
I think Jim sent an email, said they resigned, and both sent emails that they're resigning.
That's him, so we should prepare, prepare letters for them.
Yeah. I'll see if I, I'll have to look it up, is this? Okay, I'll send it. All right, project updates, EV charging station.
Let me get to that page.
Just read off my list.
Read off your list.
EV charging station. So National Grid, National Grid has completed the make ready work. They put in the underground lines to the, some pad where the transformers are gonna go, they installed the charging cabinet. We did have a, myself, John, Gary, and Becky had a conversation with Rise Engineering about the location of the cabinet in a pad mounted transformer. And the result of that meeting was that it seems to be that the location of the cabinet and the transformer are gonna be okay. It was the request that there be some screening of the pad mounted transformer after it's installed in the cabinet, to the extent that, that it can be screened. Rise Engineering offered to get us eight to ten arborvitae. I also reached out to, I'm not a big fan of arborvitae, a wall of arborvitae, I also reached out to Becky to see if there was something that some of the senior sort of members could do in terms of coming up with like a planting plan or something that's a little bit more attractive than a a wall of eight to ten trees. So we'll have to, we'll have to see where that goes. In terms of timing for the installation of the pedestals and the chargers, it's gonna look, it's looking like sometime probably into July, early August, when they'd expect to be to have National Grid come in and activate those. And at that time, we'd be having the meeting with a software vendor and getting up to, getting those set up, so we're looking probably at the end of summer sometime, would be my guess. So that's pretty much where that is. All of this is being funded through an EVIP grant and National Grid utility incentives.
Fire station generator.
Fire station generator, that will, so bid documents will be available this Wednesday. Site visit will be the ninth of July, and then written responses or bid responses will be due on July twenty-third at one P M. That should line us up for the board to award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at the July twenty-ninth meeting, is the goal there.
How much is that gonna cost us?
The cost estimate was thirty thousand dollars.
And where are we gonna get that?
Good question.
Okay.
I don't know, the generator itself was purchased with our funds. But I, I wasn't around when those conversations.
You'll remember the, you'll remember the meeting, I asked, this is gonna cost us forty thousand dollars, is it?
He didn't, he said thirty, right?
Plus, plus sixty-two hundred for the.
It's still not forty.
All right, where are we gonna get that? I don't know. Okay. Library windows.
That is in the works. I signed, Bob returned the signed proposal to the contractor, and they're guessing that the windows will be in and around sometime the first of August.
What's the cost on that?
Sixty-two hundred.
Where are we gonna get that?
It was authorized out of.
Townhouse maintenance?
Townhouse maintenance.
Townhouse maintenance, I believe.
At that time, we thought we were paying out twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four, yeah. Well, TWB building assessment.
So just have a signed proposal back to Time Bond. I reached out to Craig French, and he's supposed to get back to me with a project kickoff date this week. Get back to me this week for a future project kickoff date.
And we're paying for that out of.
Our, our money.
It's fifty something?
Fifty-four, was it?
Fifty-four, I think, fifty-four. Townhouse repairs, those are things that came up, we had to get repaired. Those are all fixed?
You're gonna have to call them?
I did two bits of the job, that's it off. Can you have the camera address me, split?
Where's the dead tree?
Address. In the far corner, the parking lot. Yeah, in the corner of the.
That water tank?
About the one that fell on top of the dumpster?
Yeah.
The one that fell on top of the.
Down here on the corner there, one of them's probably ours, one of them's probably the neighbor's possibly, but.
Push it back on its side.
Which way is it gonna fall?
All right. That water tank, we've talked about this before.
Ongoing issue.
Hot water tank?
Hot water issues.
That's been an ongoing issue for three years now.
Yeah, maybe I can follow up with the, I think the plumbing inspector is the person that I should have a conversation with.
I think you should have a detailed conversation with the plumbing inspector to find out exactly what he wants to do.
And how are we doing on our cable TV television license? Resume.
Good, I talked with Attorney Bill August last week. And I heard much of the same stuff that I've heard before. It's kind of a limited field in terms of what the possibilities are. So I think it would be a good option if the board wanted to retain him. He talked a lot of the same stuff that we heard about.
How much does he want?
Franchise fee, oh, it's similar.
What?
It would be similar, yeah.
The other guy services him, Bill?
No.
Because he didn't do it.
That's a couple of years out, we'll get it.
I would just say we reallocate those funds and you asked for deliverables from the other attorney, correct?
So for, so for this attorney, we would have to figure out, he said they can do a, so the most, the majority of our conversation was about the franchise fee.
Okay.
Which is zero to five percent of gross revenue for charter. He doesn't think charter would be willing to go from zero to five, because it's, because they pass along the cost, right? So he said there's different ways to look at it. If you're gonna do long-term, he was suggesting that you could increase incrementally, over the term of the ten-year agreement. Or you could do a shorter agreement. The shortest that he's seen charter do is a three-year agreement. In terms of, in terms of getting equipment money, or what's called pay access money, he said it's really, it's really important for the town to be able to show a need so that there's a sort of a pay access plan, for lack of a better term, a written plan that will give them, that would give us leverage to go to charter and say, this is what we're planning on doing. Just an outright ask without any plan in place to.
Right.
To get those channels up and running is probably not gonna be successful. So he definitely has, seems to have the knowledge and the experience. I think he's doing two or three charter agreements right now. Charter just brought on a new, new attorney that's doing their cable, cable license agreements with communities now. So.
Vader, I'm not giving up on that. I'm just telling you right now.
Can we go back to cable for a second?
Sure.
Just for the record, you asked Attorney Solomon for deliverables a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
And he has not sent any deliverables?
He did the short-term agreement. The ninety-day short-term agreement.
Right.
He attended the meeting with the, one meeting with the board.
But anything in addition to that, that he said he had, nothing has come in, right?
I have no proof of any additional work, other than emails promising work product that never.
Never arrived.
Never arrived, so if anything, we owe him minimally nothing, in my opinion.
Or next to nothing.
Well, I have to say, I mean, going back to your school thing, at least we got something for the school bill. This guy, whoever paid him, we can't prove we actually ever gotten anything.
Yeah.
Only thing we got was actually, like I said, that short-term, what, three months?
The extension.
We haven't, we haven't paid him anything, though, right?
The half the extension was copied from some other town and was wrong, right?
All right, sorry, I mean, I interrupted, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, Vader, I repeat, I'm not giving up on this.
Don't know, dude.
So what is this analogy? Drive replaces the order. What's that gonna do? That's a, that's a survey that's crashing?
Yeah. That's a, that's a short-term fix to the immediate need.
Right, okay, that is right, it's a short-term fix, right? Okay. Double poles. Well, what they sent us is just the old thing, what they need to do is send us the list of the, of the list of the completed but not ticketed.
Correct, yep. Yeah, it's strange how they, if you can have an open project, but you might not have a ticket yet. So it only looked like there was eighteen, maybe eighteen double poles, none of them on Allen Street. So I followed up with them and they're just supposed to get us a new list.
And the lease for the towers?
Yep, town council's working on, on that lease with SBA, with, with the intent that the increased payments on the to the town on the landfill tower will offset the payments that the town makes on the commercial drive, village drive, tower.
Make sure the, make sure it keeps rising and keeps at a net zero.
You're right, and make sure to include the CPA, the escalator.
Escalators.
That's indexed off the CPA, CPI.
I did have somebody say to me, they're watching our meeting, why do you want elevators? We don't want elevators, it's escalators.
We want escalators. Fiber. Verizon's still seeking forty-five thousand eight hundred and six.
Yeah. Yes, so from what I can tell, there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar broadband grant. And that was meant to pay the aerial surveys for National Grid, Verizon, and then for Whip City, right, to do, and Comcast, maybe?
Uh, not Comcast, Whip City and their.
Charter? Charter? No, I don't think there's any bills to charter.
No, it was, it was to Whip City for their, their work, it was for the aerial inspections of the poles, inspections for Verizon and National Grid. From what we're gathering, Verizon's saying, hey, we did all these inspections, but now you owe us true-ups for our work we just did to visually look at your pole, our pole. So it's far more expensive.
Three times, yeah, most, most invoices are three times.
Three times more expensive than what National Grid charged us. And we are basing the numbers off of what Whip City had provided us, based on past experience. And we are basing the numbers off of what Whip City had provided us based on past experience. So we all know Verizon's a dying dog, so they're probably trying to squeeze every they can out of places.
Right.
So, um, I know Brian was looking for direction from Whip City because they were the ones that facilitated Verizon.
Yeah, they gave us the estimate, so.
Right. I mean, I can see a little bit overage, but not $45,000 for 10 poles or whatever they had in town. Which are probably doubles.
Yeah. Oh, that's how they did it. The double charging with a double pole.
So, um.
I'm not kidding, but it it to me, it's a, it's.
Highway robbery.
Overcharging.
Yeah. For not even doing any work. It's just more or less just going up measure. And then it's it, they're not moving lines, they're not adding lines, they're not fixing poles.
They're just looking at the pole.
It's just a survey, just write it down. Yeah.
We'll have to have. We'll have to, eventually, I think we'll have to have discussions with Verizon about that.
Yeah.
Cause it it's ridiculous.
Good. Fire station, addition, I think, here's a meeting, right?
We, uh, we met last week. If you want, we'll touch on that real quick. Um. There's a couple of things that look like need to be addressed in the Mitchell report before anything else can go forward, just for safety issues. Um, they're looking into a couple of options for some of the asbestos removals. Cause of the floor tiles are pulling and chipping and poses an immediate risk. So and then there was talks about possibly looking at an extended use, um, trailer. And what those rental charges would be. So we're just trying to see where that would go.
All this stuff, right?
Yeah.
The brush truck's been ordered, right? Waiting on delivery.
Uh, tractor got delayed also. You may have seen that before.
Tractor got delayed.
That brush truck will be a while from what I saw.
Really?
Yeah. I heard that the chassis is gonna be delivered first quarter next year and they have to build it out.
Okay. Then one question I would have, we could verify, and I think the answer we've already been told, is that the funds stay good. I mean, the majority of the money is being paid by the feds.
Right. So in that, from past emails, I could, I could see that the, the FEMA grant went to volunteer fire company.
Right. But I mean, did that money come into our account already?
I don't see it anywhere, but I'll, I'll follow up.
Right. Just make sure that, oh, pushing it off three more quarters, does that hurt the grant? Was there a completion date for Dubai?
I I started looking a little bit, but I didn't have a lot of documents.
It was out pretty far, though, I think.
Yeah, maybe some. I mean, they understand.
Wasn't the, the grant money in, but it went right back to the outfitter or the company, right?
I'm the same.
I mean, some places would want to deposit, you would think it'd cost them that much, too.
I like forensic accounting, so we'll find out.
Okay.
You're doing good at it.
What do we think about the cruisers?
Well, I think the sending notes in, I mean, I appreciate these monthly things, Alan, so I understand why they can't be on a single spreadsheet and just adding a column for the month. And if they don't want to email them, put them in the fish. Have a look at them ourselves. But I think there is, going back a few, which Brian pointed out, there are some interesting trends on car usage. That if there's gonna be a request pushed to the fall from last year, I think there should be a serious discussion. On utilization of our fleet. Maybe it's too early for that, but I think this, this shows a need for a discussion.
What, um, what stands out as needing a need? I'm just curious.
Um, there's one car that seems like it's barely used, one of the, one of the cruisers. I mean, the mileage barely goes up month by month. Is there a reason for that? We talked about the fact that the, the non frontline car. Has a lot, has the fastest, basically, increase in mileage on a monthly basis. So maybe we should be looking at a different type of vehicle for that one that gets replaced. If there was the conversation about moving that and re outfitting it to be a frontline vehicle, its replacement perhaps would not be. A frontline car. All these things are, I think, are points of discussion.
Do we have any?
How do they track the hours, Greg? I mean, when they show the hour thing, is that, is that on the dashboard?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the newer, like when I worked at Ford, a lot of the newer cars would have the hour gate filtering, especially.
Like a tractor, basically.
Yeah, a lot of like, you know, the F series would have them, and then they started doing it in the interceptors.
Okay.
But there's also a formula where mileage times date equals of hours.
I don't know if they track that because they do so much, maybe actually sitting and idling, you know, that would be the hour.
Yeah, more or less the hours are more important than the miles.
Because of the way they're used.
When I, at the dealership, hours are far more important. We'd have cars come in under warranty, under 100,000, but. Based on the hours, they were close to 300,000 miles. You know, these are, these are other municipalities.
Now, that was the kind of conversation they always talk about taxis back in the day, you know, they, oh, it only had 100 on it. Yeah, but it sat there, so weren't running.
Yeah. But you know, this raises another question, too. I mean, capital planning, do we need, foresee a need for another, that committee to be reformed?
I don't know. You know, I've looked at some research, some other towns, and hate to say it, the towns are growing what their limit for capital planning is. Used to be, you know, we had 10,000. Now it's nothing under 50 is part of capital planning. It's an expense. You look at the fact, Don, remember, folding the dump trucks basically are part of the budget. You don't even go off a debt exclusion form anymore. You know, just because our target has gotten so high. The cruisers, it's in the budget is the thing. The highway trucks, you don't borrow from them. It's just part of it.
Gotcha. So just more of a due diligence on our part than on the.
It is, it is. But I think, you know, when you talk about capital, I think your plan is right when we talk about the fact, the larger things, we have the building projects. How do we balance that cap, those capital needs going forward? When we gotta borrow for this, we have to borrow for that, how do we merge it in? You look at the fact, some towns, and we did the same thing. We consolidated, Don, you recall the bond for the, um, the landfill. Where they think green metals at one point, and we merged them into basically one general bond. You know, but we had to wait till we could call that bond first, which is the last five years, I believe. Yeah. So, but that type of thing, do you just stagger your projects? Or you look at the fact that historically, we keep our debt load between 6 to 8% of the budget. One year it approached 10% when we first started the road project, but then something else fell off. You know, and the state, I think, and Brian probably knows more, it's like the stabilization fund. They have guidelines of how much you should have. On a debt thing, and they're not gonna look badly at a town running under 10% in debt load. That's because that's how you do it. You know, you have to maintain something to grow.
Topics for the town meeting?
I think we should have one.
A town meeting?
I think we should. No, I think we should have a town meeting. Thank you. Yeah. But I think the biggest topic, you know, we should talk, but I made that point to the committee. It's not to really start talking about the fall town meeting, especially potentially we might make it, bring it up to even like October 21st week. Then we're talking about, we're gonna have it on a Saturday. Are we gonna choose a different day? We're coming back to our regular schedule and Labor Day, which leaves a month and a half technically, less than two months to town meeting. I'm saying it's gotta be on our radar now. Especially some of these boards that are meeting once a month, they need to know about it.
Yep.
But I think your point, like you said before, fall town meeting is merging into like a usual meeting. But money requests still should be an emergency thing that wasn't planned for at the annual. Not from our standpoint, per se, because we're looking at the whole picture, but a board like, say, Parker Rec. You know, is there something that's so dire, you can't wait till the annual town meeting? Has to be a request now. So I think it's almost time to start putting that memo together to go out to different departments, especially the ones that only meet once a month. They're only gonna have three or four meetings until the fall down. Heck, three meetings until the advisory hearing.
What, what are we typically, second week in October, third week?
Generally, it's right at the end. It's been like the 28th, 29th, but.
Almost November.
Yeah.
But then you got, you got the problem you're gonna have there is that you're gonna have early voting for the presidential election. You have early voting. Over here.
No. Yeah, I'm saying.
That's usually what, two weeks ahead, two weeks before, though. So that'll be. November 2nd and 9th, maybe.
Yeah, so, so I mean, the question is gonna be, do we want to try like the 26th, Saturday, 26th, or keep it Monday to 28?
I would be opposed to the 26th just for the closeness to Halloween and a lot of trunk or treats and town events are that day.
The week before?
Yeah, not just here, but like all over the place. There's a lot of.
Would you be opposed to the 19th?
I think we should have that discussion, the 19th, yeah. That could, that could work.
That's what I'm saying. If we are on top of now, the 19th is, I think.
That's doable.
You know, we can put a pin in that, yeah.
I just, um, I know that they're already planning the Fall Fest. I don't know what day they've chosen.
Really?
Yeah. So.
That's usually like Columbus Day weekend, isn't it, though?
Well, it's usually before, it like, I, I think last year was the week before Halloween. Maybe, maybe it was, it was two weeks before. I don't remember offhand.
Well, wanna try for the 19th, I mean.
We put a pin in it. Maybe that's part of Brian's memo out to people that the selectmen are discussing. Actually, you have a meeting, um, Wednesday, right? Or is it next week?
There's nobody here the rest of the week.
Your staff meeting is next week?
Yeah.
You think the 12th is too early?
And, um.
Yeah. Isn't that holiday weekend?
Rick Green wants to come, I think, the first, maybe the next meeting.
Yeah, isn't that that weekend?
He wanted to come and talk about consent agenda and early vote, uh, electronic voting.
Right.
So I could also have a discussion with him.
Cross the 14th.
Yeah, before, so it's that weekend. People are away. Yeah. But I mean, I think it's worthwhile, like you say, Don, floating it out to people, but hey. And by the way, we may be moving it up.
We'll put the feelers out, yeah.
See what happens.
Does that go with the planning board's plan? I, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't think it would affect theirs, per se. I mean, they're on, right now, I think they've told Don, they're on target.
August 14th.
Yeah.
You want a whole hearing.
Which ones they putting forward, Don? Change in the name thing?
Change, planning board has a change in the name thing.
And are we still thinking about the number of people? Are you gonna put that on?
Yeah, three to five, the, uh, oh, they also, the planning board's also got the battery thing. I gotta get that to them.
Three to five, you got a shot.
Three to five, uh, and what else you got? Town clerk appointed, treasurer, collector appoint, combined and collected appointed. That, the battery storage thing.
Electronic.
The national grid easement, which is just a poor form of. Uh, water district expansion, I think you're gonna.
You gotta be ready for that.
There was, um. Talks about not knowing if we're gonna get that, that funding until sometime in September. So.
Right, yeah, they won't move on. We won't order that until September.
Right.
Okay.
But that might be a placeholder.
Um, then we're gonna have, we're gonna have some FY 2025 budget adjustments. Employee benefits.
I suspect we should look at that.
What?
I suspect we should look at that.
Well, employee benefits. If our last payment that we gave in June was 52,855.
Yeah.
And so if you say that's gonna be the payment for the next 12 months, that's, that's 634,000 there. That doesn't include payments to the IRS for, for Medicare, which last year was 52,989. So that puts us at 687,255, and we, and we budgeted. Yeah, that puts us at 687,255, and we budgeted this year 657,570. So we're already.
Next year, we also have to pay out for Jane.
We already, we're already $30,000 over and pay out to Jane. Who knows who else has been on.
Well, not just that. And keep in mind, we have enrollment things. We should keep a bit of cushion in there for the people who come on the plan.
Right.
Right.
So we're 30,000 short.
Maybe, Don, you're looking at 750. There's not off, out of the realm there, really.
No.
725 to 750 is not out of the realm there.
So go look at that. And then we got 7,500 in the educational incentive. Or someone.
What's that?
We have $7,500 short in the educational incentive benefits. For one of our.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Officers neglected to tell us that.
It's taken out of off duty money or something, if you have to transfer from there.
The blocks.
Well. Yeah, you can't, I, I did look up at the off duty money, and you, you can't do anything with it except put it in the general fund.
So you're allowed to sweep it?
Yeah.
So we have time to say, oh, that was done.
I don't know.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, absolutely some in there, because you have, you know, it's almost, you know, some bills that are coming in that are legitimate, if I understand. But still, there is a, I don't wanna say profit, but there is a overage.
Administrative fee.
It's an overage, basically.
You got Rocka Dundee Bridge. We're gonna have to do something with that, right? Easement?
What's up with that?
Yeah, I'll follow, I'll follow up with Mark. Mark came and talked to me. Um, I think it was a week ago. He said that Mastop had a survey done and they couldn't find a, a street layout for the street.
Well, it's probably, we saw that in the planning board all the time, but the streets had existence at the time of incorporation.
Yeah.
You know.
Can't seem to find anything around town. Can't find the street, can't find the water line.
Different bridge. That's a different bridge. Come on.
Where's the town hall?
They were recommending that.
Where that broken tree is.
The town would formally lay that out, or they would ask that the town formally lay that out. And I, and I asked him, what do we, is it the whole street? And he said, well, Mastop only cares about the area around the bridge. So.
Just ends there.
All right. And the senior center expansion, we'll see what happens with that, right?
And I could, like I said, the fire station, it could be a few things.
Could be a few things. All right, got a few things on it.
That won't be this year.
Fire station?
It won't be the fall.
Any money for the, uh, payment? The station, maybe?
Maybe that.
Um, Sluckman reports.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Already touched base on it during the, uh, Brian's review there.
Uh, master plan committee has been meeting diligently, and we have 126 responses from the survey. They're gonna do a hard copy, I guess, now, and we're continuing to try to get more responses on the survey. See what happens there. And they still, we still haven't scaled the second public forum yet, right? Correct.
How do we gain, gain engagement on a second public forum?
I don't know.
I mean, I think that should be maybe, maybe a topic.
Change of different night, change of different day, or, I mean, every day is terrible.
It is.
Well, obviously, people are choice to come into our meeting and that meeting, so.
I would like to maybe attend the next meeting, so maybe we.
Well, we won't, we won't, I said that, we're not gonna have it on Monday night.
And we're off on Mondays, too.
Right.
There was some conversation for the time, maybe bouncing to 6:30, or when we had seven.
Seven, seven, yeah.
Yes. I think pull it back to 6:30. Yeah.
6:30, and I think we hit a lot of places to get it out there, but the word is out, so maybe, maybe it's a little better.
I know Don was on, focused on all the, you know, the scenarios and getting a lot of engagement on social media, but that didn't translate into bodies and seats. So would you, what you thought it would have was some of those topics that are being discussed.
You know, so.
Is it, is it childcare thing again? Is it?
This is an opportunity to test out childcare.
Maybe.
Yeah. And, but it would take, yeah, like a dry run for a town meeting.
Oh, yeah. So we're gonna have childcare.
Right. And put it out there, hey, you know, we have this. But, but make it clear, you have to take them with you when you leave. This isn't.
One other idea that I've seen with, with master plan meetings is that they, they'll reserve like a. Two hour block or three hour block. So it's not, if you can't get there right at six, you missed a presentation. And then if people can have a window where they can drop in and provide feedback, that's, that's another option as well.
Bad idea either.
Yeah, I did see a bit of the thing, and it's not on the YouTube channel yet. But it seemed like it started partway through was the, it didn't start at the beginning, the video that's on the town site. It started like two minutes in, there's also the guy talking and, and really gotta get that split screen, cause he says, okay, and somebody comes up, asks a question. You don't see that person or what they're showing or whatever. And the YouTube channel, so we lost all our individual playlists. Is that what happened? We don't, we used to have like, okay, here's the Concom meetings, here's the, you know, that type of thing.
Lost some of them, yeah.
How did that happen?
Um, I believe Bob was on it and accidentally erased some stuff.
Recently?
Yeah.
Uh, a couple of months, month or two ago. Cause there's some fly fishing stuff on there instead. And he still has ownership of the YouTube. It's under his personal email, so I can't change it without contacting him.
Do you have, do you have?
He's still managing.
We can still manage.
Yeah, we can manage it.
We just have to transfer ownership and we just need him to log in.
Fortunately, can't do it without him, yeah. Personally can't do it without him, yeah.
The other thing I want to bring up is the conservation commission hearing. That continued to July 17th, at which point they're going to have the agricultural guy come in and talk about the animal thing. At the last meeting, I pointed out to the, um, applicants that there's over two dozen, uh, cut and paste mistakes in their application. They have Indian Brook in Hampden, which is actually in Hopkinton. They have Ellis Road in Hampden, which is actually in Westminster. They have Franklin Road in, that they're going to have the snow removal from, that's in, in, uh, Hopkinton. They have the Granville Fire Department having, having us call the Granville Fire Department for coverage if there's a fire.
It's too far.
Although I'm sure they're very competent. I don't, I think the response time may be, they, and they took great offense at that. They said that, uh, that that was a, you know, typographical error. And I, my point was, it, it shows a lack of caring and it shows a lack of, oh, it's careless stuff when you're talking about an important project like this. And I said, the typographical error is the fact that you keep referring to the Perry Neal stream, right? Which is, should be the perennial stream. Perry Neal, as we know, is that area of the body that.
All right.
Throughout the whole thing, that's what they say, the Perry Neal stream. So it just shows a lack of, I don't know. And they were, now, the point I want to bring up is this, that the, the conservation commission, they had asked the conservation commission, conservation commission wanted the water tested every year. They want to have it move three to five years. I want the Board of Health to, I want to put it on the agenda next week for the Board of Health, the next time we meet, the Board of Health to discuss it. Because of the nitrogen load in the E coli, if they're going to have sheep and cows and pigs and chickens up there, that water is running down into Eastbrook, into Big Brook, into the Perry Neal streams. And it goes right past our public water supply at the Scanty Valley Water District. So I think that should be tested every year. So I was thinking we could discuss that as the Board of Health, the next time we meet and advise the conservation commission that we think this, whatever you decide to do.
Seems appropriate.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions and, uh.
The other question I had too was about the battery storage, right? There was, were they going to do that there in that project as well?
They're going to do that battery storage enterprise as well, yeah.
Is, now, is, would that be considered grandfathered in because they've already had the application in? Cause I was talking to an individual from ISO New England and they were telling me a lot of their, a lot of battery storage systems on large scale, there's the mortarium on them or they, they can't install them at the moment.
Right.
I thought that was the difference between battery storage, basically that's the only thing on the parcel versus battery stores that's part of a.
No, no, they have a tiers now. They, they had divided by tiers. A tier one is like you would have at your house.
Yeah.
Small battery storage at your house. Tier two is battery storage connected directly to a solar field.
Like we have.
Like the.
Like you have the landfill. And tier three would be the one that's standalone.
Which is the proposal technically on house. So which one are we regulating per se? We're looking at tier three basically.
We're looking, we have to do all three. So what you could say is a tier one battery storage, uh, it can be at the house, but it can't be in the garage. You know, or in the cellar, something, you know, you know, something like that. Tier two would be, it could be to the, it's assigned to the solar farm, but it, it has to have a certain, uh, fire suppression things, things in a pad and all this kind of stuff. And then tier three, yeah, stuff like that, so.
But it's sub, but it's subservient to the actual.
Subservient.
To the, yeah, solar facilities connected.
Right.
But to my point was, I think there's a, like a.
There's a hole on a lot of them now.
Yeah.
A lot of them now.
And yeah, the grid can't support a lot of that.
Yeah, they can't.
Yeah.
So the, you meant Concom. I see that Concom is meeting next week.
They're meeting the fifth, they're meeting, they're meeting the 17th.
But they have a meeting next week and that's dealing with the, uh, the expansion of the water district.
Right.
Right.
Water district expansion.
I didn't know they were talking about that.
Yeah.
I think the bridge too, the East Street Bridge.
Time bonds aren't taking care of.
Scenic Valley Water Improvements and then, uh, new utility pools, only one.
Only one, on Chafan Road.
Yeah, Chafan. That must be for, uh, the new houses.
Yeah. They, the, and there was, there's some.
Yeah, you're right. So there's probably time bonds.
There's some discontent with tying bond too in, in their review of, uh, you know, they missed a few things and it was brought out by some of the, uh, people who love on Glendale Road and tying bonds, yeah, we got to go back and look at that, you know? And, and honestly, I thought myself too, you know, if you're doing a review of this, you know, you, you didn't know that Indian Brook isn't in Hampden, you didn't know that the street you're talking about is not Franklin Road, you didn't know the, you know, I mean, Granville fight up, that was a whole other thing, but, oh, and then they have one too also, that, uh, the only person who could speak for the development is Ellis Development. Well, Ellis Development is in Westminster, Mass. That's a solar project for Westminster. So they got a mess going there.
Okay, but I guess not, you can't speak that per se, but is all that enough to do anything or? And it, I put you in the spot, you're not on the commission or whatever, but you've got some experience.
Yeah. I, I, it's probably not, but I think the.
It speaks to the.
It, it speaks to all the issues and it also, it speaks to the, the, either the planning board, the conservation committee, it really has to say these people, look at, we're not here to fix your problems.
So it's a credibility issue.
Yeah, it's a credibility, we're, you know, we're, we're not responsible for picking out your problems and telling you how to fix them. You know, you know, the guy said, the, the applicant said, he said, well, I spent thousands of dollars on, on, on papers and consults and all that stuff. And I said, look at, that's fine. It's, it's not my credibility. It's your credibility. You're the guys who are writing this stuff. You know? We'll see where that goes.
Brian, I can't imagine you've got much more.
What do you have to say for yourself, Brian?
Buy a cannon?
Oh, this is a great story.
You want a, you want a, you want a free cannon?
Want a free cannon?
I'm all, all forehanded, taken up arms.
So I received an email on Friday from the town of West Windsor, Vermont.
Remember, Don, they're in that conservation project and putting a solar.
With.
And they listed also.
Story about a cannon that they have, um, stored behind their town highway garage. And the, the story is that the, the cannon originated in Hampden.
And they want to return it.
And they were want, they, they no longer wanted it and they were wondering if the town would like it. Apparently it was removed from private property without, allegedly without the owner's consent. And they were wondering if the, the town would like it back.
Will they ship it to us or do we have to get it?
There's more to the story than that. It was removed without the owner's consent.
Yeah.
And it was brought up to Westminster, West.
West Windsor.
Windsor, Vermont. And the person had it on their property until 2003. And he used to allegedly shoot it off every Fourth of July. He donated it to the town in 2003, died, died in 2004. And it sat on the town in front of the town hall in West Windsor since that time. And now they're doing some kind of renovation or anything and the cannons are getting kind of, you know, stuffy too. And they're asking if we want our cannon back.
I think that if.
I say we go up there and take it.
They're part of us.
Here, here.
They're part of us, don't please relax. I think, uh, you know, we could hire someone to go get it. I mean, it's, the picture showed a nice little, that the guy had built their own carriage, basically. Karen, what's the proper term? Kason.
Kason, yeah.
And, uh, we have the money, we have $20,000 appropriated now for the 150 celebration. Now, if it costs a couple of hundred dollars for somebody to transport it carefully back here, I think it'd be appropriate use. And I think Craig, you mentioned before, it'd be a great thing to have for the 150.
Yeah, I think so. It'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, I got, you know, as you know, my grandchildren are up there, so I'm going to go up and stop in and take a look at it.
You got a trailer?
No, no, no.
You have a trailer?
You just want to tow it back in your car?
Just.
It's on, it's on a wagon wheel, right?
Yeah, right.
How do you think they could transport them back in the day?
Right, exactly.
Don, how did they transport those?
I bring a couple of bungee cords.
You say, John, how they do it?
No, nothing. Well, what we used to do.
Yeah, right.
So I'm all in favor of accepting that gift.
Thank you. All right. Anything else to come before the board?
We got to let Don look at it first, sir.
Is Don going to look at it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go look at it. I'll go look at it.
Test it out.
Make sure you shoot it off, see if.
Yeah, see if it really works right now before we take ownership of it. Some more, Brian?
Anything else?
That we haven't already really covered?
No, no. Um, just kidding. I have a meeting with, um, the superintendent and assistant superintendents to have primary discussions about the TWB lease, uh, next week.
Well, good.
July 9th at 3pm, if anybody's interested. Sure, it'll be riveting.
July 9th to 3pm?
Yeah.
Over there. Oh, TWB?
Got to pick out my new office.
Remind me.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Have a good fourth, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, you were supposed to go get John. Where is he?